Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Gloucester zoning board of appeals meeting of November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Today's meeting is a public meeting. It's also being a hybrid using the Zoom device. For the record, the Zoom ID is eight eight zero seven five seven two one six five eight. Seems like too many numbers. I recognize an attendance of full board, myself, Joseph Parisi, my left, Michael Nyman, on Zoom, Peter Cannavo, James Gelati, Lauren Norton, Ronald Wilson, and Axel Ruiz. And I declare we have a quorum. First order of business is to approve our consent agenda, and that gives the chair the ability to sign the following decisions. Twenty-one Vine Street, two eighty-nine Main Street, forty-nine Craft's Road, and ten Linden Road. Once taken a motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call. Five regulars.
Mr. Cannavo?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Tent agendas approved. We're moving into our continued hearings. First is the application of Harbor Lake Community Partners, DBA Harbor Lake Homes, for a complimentary permit under chapter forty B to construct twenty-nine units at two fifty-six Main Street. Can you just introduce? Wait a minute, we gotta get the mic for Harbor Lake Homes.
I know it sounds like we're still waiting for stormwater review information to come back. I know that was one of the major outstanding items. I don't have much in the way of an update since our last meeting. There hasn't been any revision to the plan since we last spoke. So I'm happy to take questions if you have any.
Thank you. We expect Weston and Sampson's report. We thought we might have it tonight, but we didn't. And so we're still pursuing that. The other thing is, we're asking you, there's been some talking about putting together the request for waivers in a format that we can approve and go through. Suzanne can guide you through that if there's any questions.
Sure. So that's something different than what we submitted previously in the application?
In the original, we, no, we need not to update the request for waivers that tie with all the different, you know, waiver from the dimensionally, different things like that, all the stuff that click the buttons. And once we have those two things in our process will be, it should be fairly quicker. We will approve those. We'll get a decision under draft, which we will then review at a public hearing in detail. Once we've achieved and both agreed on all those provisions, it'll be a vote. So I was hoping this would be quicker, but we've been delayed. We will continue this to December eleventh so that we can have that report by then, which will be our final piece, I think, to the puzzle. So I need a motion to continue to twelve eleven.
Oh, should it continue to twelve eleven?
Second. Aiden seconded.
Mr. Cannavo?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. So we'll see you next month with hopefully making some more progress.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Our other continued application was sixty-four Friend Street LLC for special permanent variance to convert an eight-family unit to a ten-dwelling unit at sixty-four Friend Street. This hearing was, public hearing was closed. We requested some updated and some improvements to the parking area on Taylor Street. We've received that. Personally, I say it's very favorable. I've really appreciated the effort on the parking area. And if you could just introduce yourself and we'll proceed.
Aiden Church, Seaside Legal Solutions, address one twenty-three Main Street. Here tonight on behalf of sixty-four Friend LLC. So as the chair said, we are two lots that have merged for the purposes of zoning. On sixty-sixty-four Friend Street, there are two pre-existing non-conforming buildings that together comprise a multifamily use with ten existing dwelling units, eight of which are lawfully recognized by Inspectual Services. The lot to the rear, sixty-one Taylor Street, is used only for parking for the two buildings. So we're seeking to properly permit those two units, which will ultimately require city council change of use special permit. So we previously requested dimensional variances as the change of use will require variances to wipe out the pre-existing nonconformities, the protection therefore. We'll need a special permit for height as one of the buildings exceeds thirty feet. And then we had previously requested a special permit for parking. We have withdrawn that request as we have submitted an updated plan that shows a fully conforming parking area. And finally, just for buildings and suspenders, we're requesting a special permit to alter and expand as the lot and the structures are pre-existing nonconforming. We're technically expanding the use. But again, that use will require city council change of use special permit. So in terms of parking plan updates, we have reconfigured the access to the lot as the board had suggested previously. As you can see here, there were two separate access points on either end of the parking lot. And in order to sort of make it work better for the neighborhood, we are proposing to fence off the entire lot and just utilize the center for access. So that'll actually create two new off or on-street, off-site parking spaces as well. This was in response to the neighbor at sixty-five Taylor Street who spoke in opposition and just, you know, basically said the parking in the neighborhood is rough. So we took that suggestion and the proposed plan will be fully conforming. Here's just a close-up and come back if the board has any questions, just to quickly run through the parking requirements. We're proposing twelve spots where a ton required. They are technically on the same lot as I mentioned earlier, the two lots have merged for the purposes of zoning. No spaces are proposed in the front yard of either structure on Friend Street. There's no need to move any single vehicle to park any other vehicle. We're going to pave the lot. No stall is located within one foot of the sidewalk, street or property line. We're proposing, again, to put the fence around the entire perimeter except for the access into the parking lot and then the access between parking lot and the lot with the structures. Finally, we will stripe all the parking spaces in accordance with the ordinance. They're all dimensionally conforming, as is the aisle and the access to the lot. So finally, what we do need for relief are, as I mentioned in the October meeting, we'll need dimensional variances for the lot, the lot width, lot frontage, the distance between the buildings. And building one, which is the rear building with the current six units in it, needs a left side yard variance, rear yard variance, and a variance for vegetated cover. Building two, which is the closer building with the four units, again, two of which are recognized, we'll need a front yard variance, right side yard variance, and vegetated cover as well. Again, we're scratching the special permit for a lesser number of off-street parking, but we do need special permit to exceed the allowable building height for building two. It's thirty-four point seven feet. Finally, that special permit to alter and expand. And then at the city council, we'll need, as I said, the change of use special permit and then a couple of other dimensional special permits that are under city council's jurisdiction and not the CPAs. I went through these standards in the last meeting, but we'll just quickly run through them again. Literal enforcement of the zoning ordinance would require demolition of both structures because neither of them strictly conforms to the ordinance. And even if you were to demolish both, the lot itself lacks frontage and width to construct any new multifamily configuration on the lot. So this hardship relates to the placement of the structures and the shape of the lot, which dates back to somewhere around nineteen twenty. And in terms of not harming the public good or nullifying the intent of the GZO, again, the variances will just allow these buildings to remain as is, the change of use, which again, even it's technically a change of use, but the use is existing. That will come from the city council and not from this board. They'll consider the neighborhood traffic, safety, and public services the regular one point eight standards. In terms of height, again, nothing's changing, so I think that is consistent with neighborhood character and not detrimental to the neighborhood because of obstruction of use, overshadowing or impairment of utilities. And then just in terms of the building suspenders relief for the special permit to alter and expand, again, it's not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood because the structures and even the ten-unit use do presently exist. So here's just all of what I just mentioned in terms of requests of relief, and I'm happy to answer any questions if the board has.
So eligible to vote on this tonight would be myself, Mr. Cannavo, Ms. Norton, and Mr. Ruiz. Those are the four people eligible to vote. Any questions by any member?
Chairman, Peter Cannavo. I just wanted to add, I think they did a really great job coming back and improving the lot, the parking situation, creating more on-street parking. They tried to work with the neighbors. I thought the project from the beginning was fair, just needed to clean it up, and I'm glad that they took the extra step to do that. I just wanted to add that in there.
Thank you, Peter. So we'll need a motion to approve the litany of special permits and variances. Can you put that back up so we can just go along?
Great. I'd like to make a motion based on the presentation that there are hardships here, these buildings existed, and approving these variances and the special permit are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and you've established your hardships. So I'll make a motion to approve the variances for the lot width, lot frontage, the distance between the buildings for the lot, and then for building one, the left side yard, the rear yard, the vegetative cover. And for building two, the front yard, the right side yard, the vegetative cover. And then a special permit for the height, which is currently thirty-four point seven, and a special permit to alter and expand.
Second.
I'd like to make sure that the decision includes the agreements with regard to the parking lot so that they're in there. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Roll call vote.
Mr. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mr. Cannavo?
Yes, for all the variants and permits, special permits.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Els of all yes. You've heard our decision's favorable.
Ms. Chairman, would you like to address from?
Yes, we would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, we get into our regular hearings. The first is the application of Marion Robertson for a special permit of variance to construct an addition at sixty-three Langsford Street. On up, give us your name and address for the record and then tell us about your project.
Hello, my name is Marion Robertson. I'm also known as Mai, so sometimes on the form.
You need to get really close because at home, they won't be able to hear you.
My name is Marion Robertson. I'm also known as Mai Robertson, so on some of the forms, I'm listed as Mai Robertson. I'm at sixty-three Langsford Street. I'm a painter and a sculptor. I moved to Gloucester because I knew that Gloucester was very rich in its association with the arts. I moved from Cambridge in nineteen ninety-seven. I went from an eight-minute walk to an hour and a half commute each way. So I love living here, and I did it for a really long time.
Lost you.
And so I worked in the nonprofit world and also as an artist here at home. I retired ten years ago from the corporate world and continued working as an artist.
Almost hold it. You can take it in your hand.
Yeah, you can adjust it.
They can't hear you at home. Very written.
So I've been in the artist world here in Gloucester for quite a while. Up until four years ago, I was an active member of the Cape Town Artisans Group, but unfortunately, I suffered from a series of very unfortunate events, which made me reevaluate my living situation. First of all, my brother passed away. He's my only living relative. And very shortly after that, I fell down the flight of escalator and I broke my back in three places. And then, right after that, I had a complete knee replacement and then severe abdominal surgery. So, you know, these houses are old Victorian houses. The stairs are very, very steep. The bedrooms are upstairs. The only bathroom is upstairs. And I came to realization that as I'm getting older, I really need to plan to continue to live in my house, which is what I want to do. But the stairs, the laundry is down in the basement and others, very steep set of stairs. So my plan was to add an addition on that would add a handicapped, accessible bedroom, bath, laundry facility, and work studio, all on one level that's currently the same level as my living room and dining room and kitchen. So everything would be on one floor. And that would allow me to continue to age in my house. And I realized that I need to plan to make these accommodations now while I still can, while I still have the money, for one thing, and the ability to do this. So that's my situation. And so I would please ask you to consider granting me the special permit or variance that I need to construct the addition on sixty-three Langsford. I have been working with my architect. This is Robert Chandler, and he has all the, you know, I can paint you a picture of the place, but I can't talk about the architecture, so.
Well, fortunately, you live on a nonconform, you have a nonconforming house on a nonconforming lot, so that allows you to only require a special permit to alter and expand a nonconforming structure, which is not a high bar. We just have to determine that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what exists now. So I've noticed in your application, in your design, you've kept everything within the setbacks and are encroaching no further anywhere, so that you shouldn't be. So it looks pretty good. But does anyone have any questions about the structure? I think we're good with what you're building. All righty.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
That being said, we'll have public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience or at home that wishes to speak in favor of the application? At any of the hearings, if you wish to speak either way, just come forward up to the mic, give us your name and address so we can record that and then tell us what you think. If you're at home on Zoom, you hit your raise hand button, or if you're on a phone, you dial star nine. So we do have attendees. Is anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Any opposition? Seeing none, we'll close public testimony. Any discussion by the board or are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, I think she's just, I think she's just continuing the existing nonconformity along the right-hand side of the lot.
It's, yeah, it's nonconforming on the frontage and a whole bunch of stuff.
I'm just saying where she's adding on, though. It's really just along, it's along, she's increasing.
It's increasing the nonconformity, yes.
Yes. I can make a motion or somebody else can.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'd move approval of, oop, let me start with, she is, the application of Marion Robertson for a special permit to alter and expand nonconforming structure on a nonconforming lot at sixty-three Langsford Street. So I'd move approval of that special permit. I think she is increasing the nonconformity. It's clearly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, so I'd move approval of special permit.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote.
Mr. Cannavo?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. You've heard our decision's favorable. We'll put together a decision for you, and when you get that, there'll be instructions on what to do next. Thank you. I'll write it.
Good luck with your project.
Yeah, next, application of John and Jill Broussard to appeal the determination of the building commission regarding thirty-one Shore Road. For the record, our city attorney, Franco Di Filippis, is on Zoom if we have any questions or advice.
Good evening.
Evening.
Can you pull that right up? Might just need to bring the whole stand up.
I don't want to break it.
Drop's gonna help.
Yeah, this comes as a surprise. I'm John Broussard. This is my wife, Jill. We live at thirty-one Shore Road. I got a letter, a notice. I got a notice from.
Hotteabag?
No.
He lives in the house. He's not appealing the decision, somebody else is.
Hold on.
I can explain it to you.
We can't hear you from back there, so. Who?
We never.
What home is, has this flagpole? What number?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. So you didn't apply for.
No, I just got a note.
So you need to go sit back down. Someone applied. Someone's appealing the decision, which would be Carl and Debbie Leander?
Yes, Debbie Leander. We live at twenty-nine Shore Road, and we are appealing the decision that a flagpole is not a structure. My attorney is here via Zoom tonight and can speak to this. So he is joining via Zoom. I don't exactly know how you bring him into the conversation.
Do you know his name?
Yes, Manuel.
Okay.
From Calabrits.
Calabrits.
Yep. All right, we'll bring him in.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes. Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Manuel Guanipa. Address is one Boston Place, Boston, Massachusetts. Yes, so, I'm sorry for the confusion. I believe the form was not formatted for this kind of appeal. The issue at hand is that in the address at thirty-one Shore Road, there's a flagpole that is not within the setbacks stipulated on section three point two point one of the bylaws. And Mr. and Ms. Leander, as the neighbors, applied or requested for the building commissioner to enforce the building code, and the building commissioner refused. We're here to appeal that refusal. I believe this zoning board already heard early this year, a appeal of this sort where a different family was also arguing whether flagpoles were structures or not, so I'm not going to recycle the same arguments that you guys probably already heard. Instead, I'm going to address directly the argument that the zoning, that the building commissioner used to deny the request. In his words, flagpoles are customary yard accessories, therefore, they're not structures and they don't need to comply with setbacks. I would say to that, that, not that I agree that they're customary yard accessories, but even if they are, they would still be considered structures. If you look at the definition of customary yard accessories in section three point one point eight, it lists fences as customary yard accessories. If you look at the definition of structures, it says that fences that exceed six feet in height are structures. I would argue that by that comparison, a customary yard accessory under some circumstances, like height, can qualify as a structure. And in this sense, flagpoles of a certain height should be considered structures. I would say that this board probably agrees with that, given that, it is my understanding that there is a proposal to amend the bylaws to specifically say that flagpoles over thirty feet should be considered structures. Right now, there's no specific height limit or low end on what should be the height for a flagpole to be considered a structure and does need to comply with the setbacks. I would say that, based on the language right now on the bylaws, flagpoles in general should be considered structures and should comply with the setbacks. This doesn't mean that every flagpole should require special permit, just if people want to put it outside of the setbacks, they should require special permit. Flagpoles in general could cause harm if they fall, and they could create nuisance to neighbors, like in the case at hand. It's not that outlandish to consider a flagpole as a structure. The definition of the Massachusetts, of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts already includes flagpole as a structure. Same for the town of Linfield, the city of Worcester, and the city of Walton. It's not that uncommon. And, like I said, this change or disinterpretation wouldn't affect that many residents unless they keep putting things outside of the setbacks, which they're fairly generous. They would either have to move them back a few feet or request for a special permit that in most cases wouldn't be that burdensome. That is all I have, and thank you for your time.
Can you, do you know when this flagpole was put in?
Uh, I have it right here. Give me one second.
Manuel, I can speak to that.
It's, oh, sure. I believe it was around November twenty twenty-one.
It was, November of twenty twenty-one. And at that time, we approached our neighbor and said that it was a nuisance. It made a ton of noise, and it was looming over our property. And at that time, they said, well, don't worry because our trees will grow so tall that you won't see the flagpole anymore. And after that, we did not have a conversation with our neighbor. We lived with it a couple of years, and it got to the point where we could not even be outside during the day. And at night, it disrupted our sleep. Our bedroom is in that. Um, and at night, it disrupted our sleep. Our bedroom is in that corner. It is lit up twenty-four seven. It, it looms two stories high. And so we finally decided to take legal, uh, action to determine whether there was anything we could do about it because it is truly disrupting our life. We tried to send them a letter. We tried to speak with them. Um, it is not a surprise and they did nothing. They were completely silent. And so Manuel and his firm are helping us attempt to navigate this and to help the city of Gloucester be clearer about the definition of a structure so that this doesn't happen again to anybody whose neighbor decides to uh, do something that is important to them without recognizing that there are people who live around them.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Manuel?
That's it for me.
Okay, I'm gonna ask our legal counsel, Rocco, if you would, um, speak.
Good evening, members of the board. Rocco DiFilippus, Assistant General Counsel for the city. Um, I think this board is familiar with, um, our opinion about this particular issue, namely that the definitions provided in section three point one regarding yards and how to calculate setbacks do not contemplate, uh, customary yard accessories in that calculation. And so while I don't think the direct issue before the board today is whether or not it's a structure, I believe that the custom and the way that the board has, um, treated this question of the customary yard accessory in the past, uh, is that they're simply not included in the calculation of setbacks. And so, um, our, our opinion continues to remain that, um, it is a reasonable interpretation of the Gloucester zoning ordinance uh, to include flagpoles as customary yard accessories, which would thus not be, um, uh, included in the calculation of the setback.
Thank you.
I, I might add also that, uh, issues pertaining to noise and, and light are governed in the code of ordinances, not in the zoning ordinance. And so while those may present issues, they don't appear to be issues under zoning.
Rocco, um, do we have jurisdiction over this decision not to enforce?
Yes, this appears to me to be a, uh, very, um, classic request for zoning enforcement that has been denied. The question is whether the building commissioner's interpretation of the zoning ordinance was reasonable. Um, in the past, our, our advice has been that this, uh, is a reasonable interpretation of the zoning ordinance. I think that's the way that this board has interpreted it in the past.
Yeah.
Okay, um, all right, my video turned off. We will, uh, we'll take public testimony if anybody wants to, uh, speak in favor of the appeal.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions, one twenty-three Main Street, here on behalf of Jake and Karen Tibbetts. Um, we had a very similar appeal that was, um, you got the building inspector's determination, the process of appealing that to the land court currently. And in doing so, we've done some additional research. Just want to draw your attention tonight to maybe save these people the trouble of having to go all the way through the court process to get this straightened out. Section three point one point four of the GZO says that in addition to the minimum requirements set forth in section three, which is the dimensional requirements, all buildings and other structures in the city shall conform to the requirements of the state building code, seven eighty C M R, as most recently amended. The state building code holds in by reference, MGL one forty-three, section one, which defines structure as a combination of materials assembled at a fixed location to give support or shelter, such as building, framework, retaining wall, tent, reviewing stand, platform, bin, fence, sign, flagpole, recreational tramway, mast for radio antenna or the like. So the definition by state legislature specifically refers to a flagpole as an example of a structure. The building code incorporates that statute by reference and our zoning ordinance says that all structures must comply with the building code in addition to any requirements in section three or three point two. So therefore, this is very much is a structure, very much is subject to the dimensional requirements for an accessory structure. And you should overturn the building inspector's determination that it does not need to comply. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the appeal? Now, anyone wishing to support the building inspector's decision? And be opposed to the appeal?
Back again. John and Jill Broussard have been a Gloucester resident since nineteen ninety-six. Moved into this house on thirty shore, thirty-one Shore Road in December of two thousand and twelve. We take great pride in the fact that we live there. We love the city of Gloucester. We love the United States. My father was a World War Two Marine. Her father was a Marine. We put up a flagpole that the building commissioner says is legal. This is, we can go back and forth with how good a neighbors we are, but this is an issue of, we have an American flag on a pole that isn't thirty feet that blows in the wind. We have, by requirement, we have two lights on it at night. It goes straight up.
And it's not twenty-four seven. We also are away from December until April, so the flag is removed from the pole.
So there is, you know, and when we had it put in, we didn't know that you needed a permit. So when we got a letter from them, we checked with the building commissioner. He came out and said, you know what? If we take your flagpole down, we're gonna have to take all the flagpoles within a quarter of a mile. None of them meet the original law of, but my flagpole is right to the fence, which is the dividing line. It's less than thirty feet. It doesn't, you know, some of their allegations that we saw in the letter are ridiculous. You, you look at.
It's a walkover.
Right. But if you go around and look at Shore Road and all the surrounding neighborhoods, there are flags closer, near their neighbors. It's an American flag. We just had Veterans Day. I take great pride in going out and looking at that flag. And so that, you know, I have more veterans combined because I'm always out in the yard, walking by the street and saying, flag looks great. Now, because this young lady wants to control what she sees because she looks out to her right and sees the flag, she did, our flag was up one day. And then we got a text from her, the most beautiful picture you ever saw of the flag and the sunset. And she said, we would, we appreciate it if you were to let us know that you were putting up a flag. I didn't know in America and in Gloucester, you have to check with her to put up a flag. This, that we're here and wasting this amount of time for an American flag that is always kept in top condition is, to me, is absurd, but, you know.
She also said in the, the, um, the, the text that she sent to me that it was imposing on her sunset. Um, now, she lives at, right next to us and you have the entire ocean in front of you, but because the flag is over where the sunset comes, that was the main, one of the main issues that she, they were concerned with. She said, we sit out upstairs and look at the sunset and we can no longer do that, which is, it's a flag.
It's, it's a flag.
Thank you. Anyone else? All righty. Discussion? Rocco, do you have a second?
Um, well, I would just like to note on the interplay between three point one point four as it relates to the state building code. I, I think that, um, the board can see that, uh, the definitions incorporated in the state building code and those particular requirements don't necessarily invalidate the, the zoning ordinances, uh, treatment of those particular definitions in its definition. And if you look at the definitions of yard, both front, side, or rear, it's very clear language that you calculate this setback by using where the building is and the property line. And so it's, and projections from the building. And so it's pretty clear that, yes, okay, if the building code defines flagpole as a structure, that's essentially irrelevant to how customary yard accessories like a flagpole are calculated, are used to calculate the setback requirement.
Okay, discussion? I mean, I think we're. On you one second.
Well, other than the, uh, introduction of, you know, this, this, uh, state building code, this is the same as the case we decided earlier and and we've, we've asked for clarification of the zoning and, um, to, at this point, Gloucester says that a flagpole is an accessory yard, accessory structure or accessory whatever. I mean, as I look at it, yard accessory, as I look at it, it's one dimensional. Fences are two dimensional. Buildings are three dimensional. You can be sheltered in them, so until we have another, more information, I would support the building inspector.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think this is, uh, I mean, there's so many things that would be traditional yard accessories. I mean, are we gonna start having to permit swing sets and clotheslines and any, everything else that we've traditionally just allowed people to do? I mean, I fly a flag. Am I gonna go take it down? We're gonna take the one down out in front of City Hall if it doesn't meet the setbacks and the, you know, this is, to me, I think, uh, a little bit off the end. I don't know why, you know, they didn't take any action when this pole went up. And again, we're not even gonna get into that. I just think that I can, we, we've determined and we can do that again tonight if we so choose, that the flagpole is a traditional yard accessory. And with that in mind, I would, we, we have to have a positive motion, so we will require a motion to support the appeal. But if people don't agree and they want to support the building inspector, they would vote no. So that's where we're at.
I'm, I'm remembering my Boy Scout rules for proper flying flags and I understand that the, you know, you can fly a flag in the dark at night as long as it's lit.
Yeah.
Um, but I also remember some things about being a good neighbor. And if the lines are pounding on the, the, the flagpole, um, all the time, as I expect they would, I've been on sailboats. Um, perhaps the, you know, the owners of the flagpole might consider a different arrangement. They have arrangements where the lines are inside. Um, you've heard me, I believe you have a right to have a flagpole. I'm just suggesting that you might want to only fly it during the day and, um, try to control the lines. I'd like to make a move to vote on the appeal by the appeal submitted by Carl and Debbie Leander, who live at twenty-nine Shore Road about the, uh, letter by the building inspector regarding the flagpole at thirty-one Shore Road.
So I'm, I'm seconding the motion to support the appeal. A negative vote is in favor of the building inspector.
Correct.
Correct.
So I would second the motion to approve the appeal.
Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded with regards to the appeal of the building inspector's decision. Roll call vote?
Mr. Canavo?
Didn't hear you, Peter. So a no vote?
No.
No?
Mr. Nyman?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Ms. Norton?
No.
Mr. Parisi?
No. So you've heard our decision. We are supporting the building commissioner's interpretation and decision to not take action on the, uh, request. Yeah. And Rocco will take care of that writing. Okay, our next application is the application of Kellen O'Malley for a special permit of variance to demolish and reconstruct a single-family home at Four Youngs Road.
Guys, hear me all right?
Yep.
Um, Kellen O'Malley, forty-seven Craft Road. I'll be speaking tonight on behalf of my, uh, LLC, Round Rock LLC. Um, I established it this past spring when I purchased Four Youngs Road from Mr. Chris Young. Um, I'm here tonight seeking the special permit for a demo and reconstruction, along with, uh, some relief on the setbacks. Um, to give you guys a little bit of background on the property, um, upon purchase, I was made aware from City Legal. I wanna butcher his last name, Rocco from City Legal. Made me aware that, uh, the property wasn't currently in good standing with the city. Uh, it was a vacant lot and there was also, um, an extremely large amount of debris and trash that needed to be removed. Um, so this summer, I spend most of my summer, uh, removing the debris and trash. I have recorded over thirty thousand pounds of trash that came off the property, as well as a, uh, fairly large tree, um, all which resulted in this property being a condemned vacant property. Moving forward from this, I spent quite a bit of time down at the, uh, uh, the building department with the city. I can't thank them enough. They've been certainly pointing me in the right direction, seeing as, uh, I'm very unaware of this type of stuff. I'm actually a commercial fisherman by trade. Um, they pointed me in the direction to get the property surveyed. I reached out, um, to some colleagues, uh, who pointed me in the direction of Kirk Benson. Uh, he surveyed the property, got the, um, the outside boundaries as well as the elevations where the pre-existing property stands. Um, and from that point, I was directed to get an architect to develop the plans, which I've shared with you guys tonight. Um, in regards to looking for an architect, um, again, reached out around town and was directed to a few different people, but went with Jason Gove. Um, I think it's worth noting that his wife was raised on Youngs Road as well. And then this, at this point, in regards to the design and the plans that are in front of you, um, I had very little say in them. I honestly spoke with Jason and said, I'm a fisherman, you're an architect. Um, you know, I trust your knowledge because I'm certainly not very knowledgeable and such. Um, so I know we're looking at a, a few setbacks as well as a height variance. Uh, I think the height variance is, um, fairly minimal. Uh, and speaking with Jason this evening, uh, he kept throwing the word around the slope topography. He said it would make a lot more sense to the people in front of me, um, just given the elevations of the property, uh, being on a hill, uh, which is kinda why we're looking for a little bit more relief on, uh, what would be the left side of the property, um, as well as the front. If you look on the, the uphill side or the right side, you'll notice, um, in that drawing, we're not, we didn't go all the way to that boundary. We're asking a little bit more on the left side, which abuts, uh, the Quaitman property. What else do we got here? Yeah, so, um, bigger, bigger picture. I'm, I'm also been working on front loading for the demolition. Uh, I had the asbestos abatement completed, uh, an exterminator, um, contracted, there's been traps on site. The power's been removed, so I'm doing everything in my power uh, outside of commercial fishing, uh, which is my primary occupation, uh, to keep this project moving forward, try to clean the neighborhood up and yeah, present an opportunity to build there.
Okay. Anything else?
Can we review just for a second, just even amongst ourselves, what he needs?
Yeah, I interpret it. So you, the existing home, um, the condemned home is. Yeah, I interpret it. So you, the existing home, the condemned home is already pre-existing non-conformity.
So 2.4.5 on that.
Yeah, demolition and rebuild.
Yep. Needs a rear yard, right, for the deck. I think, I thought he did a very good job holding his house within the 30 feet. But then the deck extends into the rear. So I'm pretty sure he needs a rear yard variance for that deck. And then he's increasing his lot coverage to 28.3. So I think he needs a lot coverage variance of 3.3%. And then he needs a 3.1.6 special permit for height. Yeah. Like 2.3 feet, or whatever it was, I think. I think that's what he needs for relief.
So we're gonna be looking at-
And, and the left side setback.
No, that's a pre-existing non-conformity. He's at seven, he's at, he's currently at 7.6, and he's backing it to eight feet. So it's not a lot, but I don't, I think that's part of the special permit. I don't think he needs a left side variance.
Right. So it's a special permit to demolish and replace, a special permit for height, and a variance for rear yard and lot coverage.
Believe so.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right. So any, we'll be able to take public testimony. For anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward, or if you're online, raise your hand. Anyone in favor?
Yes, good evening, Richard Quaitman, 10 Dennison Street, Mr. O'Malley's property abutts our eastern and southern borders. Kellen's purchase of this property is the best thing that's happened to this neighborhood in decades. The existing property was abandoned, but was used by drug addicts. There were at least two overdoses, one death in the last year. As he indicates, already cleared off, I forget how many tons, but like five or eight dumpsters. So we're, we're, he's, he's been a perfect gentleman. He's apologized for the noise of construction. He said it's music to our ears. So I urge the board to approve his, his application.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the project? Any opposition? Seeing none, enclosed public testimony? I agree. It seems like we're slowly but surely improving Youngs Road, and cleaning up a lot of different properties up that way, which is all good. Any other questions by the board? Oh, go ahead.
I move in favor of the motion of Kellen O'Malley on behalf of Round Rock LLC for the property on Four Youngs Road for a special permit under section 2.4.5 to demolish and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming structure on a, pre-existing non-conforming lot. And and a special permit for, to exceed the maximum building height, and two variances, one for your rear yard setback, and for lot coverage at 3.3, an additional 3.3. I find that these changes will, there's a hard spot for the variances, and the changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. In fact, we'll be improving the neighborhood quite considerably.
That good? Which are made and seconded. Roll call, vote?
Mr. Canavo?
Yes, for all the requested relief.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes, for all the requested relief.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Heard our decision is favorable. We will create a draft decision for you. Get that out, you're gonna do that. So Lawrence can write that. For the next hearing on Wells Street, Axel, you'll be voting on this one?
Oh, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay, Michael's recusing. So Axel, you'll be voting on that. The application of Timothy Oviat for a special permit of variance to construct an addition at Five Wells Street.
Good evening. Tim Oviat with Five Wells Street here.
Listen loud, sir.
Can you hear me? Tim Oviat with Five Wells Street, 5A Wells Street in particular. There's two buildings on this property, and I'm looking to do pretty much a full renovation on 5A. Just looking for, what brought me in front of the zoning board is the egress that I'm looking to put off the back of the house. Trying to install like a balcony with an egress, very small, about three feet extending from the back of the house, and 10 feet wide about. I'm also looking to raise the back bedroom roof in order to have proper headroom in that particular bedroom. It's a, it was an addition a long time ago, so that the height is very, very low. So looking to kind of raise that. And then also looking to install a deck off that bedroom, basically above the dining room. So that's pretty much what I'm looking to do there.
Very tight neighborhood. Have you talked to your neighbors?
Uh, yeah, I've talked, talked to my neighbors, yeah.
Okay. Any opposition?
Uh, nothing that I've heard of yet.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant, by anyone at this point? All righty. We'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward or raise your hand. I remind everyone, you give your name and address first, and then tell us what you think.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Lockwood. I live at 108 Washington Street. And my house is directly abutting the back of Tim's property. And interestingly enough, we both bought our properties at the same time, like within 30 days of each other. So I lucked out by having such a great neighbor. You know, there's been a lot of construction, but we've done a lot of construction too. And everybody needs to do a lot of construction. That's why we're here, right? So I say a resounding yes to whatever he decides to do. His property comes right up to mine. And there's really only sometimes three feet between our two houses. And I'm, you know, anticipating at some point, you know, we'll join it somewhere. But, you know, right now, you know, this is, you know, a great thing for him, for us.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Okay, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the project? Any opposition? Please come forward.
Hi, my name's Beverly Palmaci, and I live at 8 Commonwealth Avenue, on the corner of Commonwealth and Wells Street. Tim's a very nice guy, new neighbor. Ms. Lockwood is the same. My concern here is precedent. We are all on top of each other. I have lived there for, I don't know, 31, 32 years. So I'm like one of the last women standing. Four abutting properties to me have recently been purchased within the past year or so. Those are two of the purchasers, and there are more. It's constant work, constant noise, constant everything. It's been a nightmare. But that's what we have to live through, I guess. But we have zoning ordinances, and we have them for a reason. They are to protect us, because what was built before was a question of everyone encroaching upon everyone else. That's why the zoning ordinances of 1969 were created, as I understand it. And the purpose is to protect our quality of life and the welfare of the inhabitants. It concerns me that people are gonna be allowed to build decks two feet from the property line of a house that is built on the property line. We are on top of each other. I don't think this is a good idea at all. The house next to me is two feet from me. My garage is maybe three feet from this house that Tim is renovating. I have made quite a few renovations to my house. Every single one of them was in the footprint of the existing structure. And even then, I went to every neighbor, knocked on their door, and asked, do you have any objection to my doing this? I think that's how you have to live when you live on top of each other. I know this board often says, well, we need housing. So this isn't creating housing. This is adding superfluous structures to housing. And it really concerns me that someone's gonna, in fact, someone is at the moment, right next to me. My house is on the property line, and they're building on to their property. It just, it's, it's suffocating. You, you can't live like that. And that's why we have these zoning regulations to protect us. So I, I just really think it's important that we stick to them. Every time you approve something like this, you're setting a precedent. If you approve this, what about the next one? What about the next one? And I just don't think that's right. I bought a house that was the house I could afford, which is in the densest part of town. I don't, no one wants that. You don't buy that because you want to be on top of each other. You buy it usually because that's what you can afford, and you deal with it. So I deal with it. But I just don't think it's right to set a precedent that says you can put on a balcony that's two feet from an abutter. I don't want anybody doing that to me. I, and if that issue comes up, I'm seriously gonna object to it. Because enough is enough. We're close enough. We don't need to be any closer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close public testimony. Discussion by the board, everybody. I'm sorry? Oh, correct, yeah. If you'd like to address any of those concerns, feel free.
So the balcony is literally about three feet from the back of the house. To my neighbor's property, it's about 12 feet. So it's not two feet. There's a little section that the house is along, that there's a garage, and it's not her house, but there is a garage that is kind of lengthwise, that's two feet to the fence line. But to, like I said, it's, it's a garage right there. So I'm not sure how it's really encroaching on anybody's property. I don't know if you guys saw it, if you went out to the property and visualized it, but literally, it's all garages right there. And then my other neighbor who's in support of it. And then everything else is, you know, on the existing property footprint.
Thank you. Yeah, I know, my noticing of it when out there, we're up and sort of in that neighborhood, it is pretty tight. We all live next to each other. I mean, we're talking about three foot one of an expansion in the back, which still, it originally was 15 feet from the back neighbor. It's now gonna be 11 foot 11 from the back neighbor. Who was in favor of? Has no objection to what's happening. So, and then the roof deck on the smaller addition on the end of the house. So personally, I think very minimal.
And, and what's being requested is special permit, is that right?
I'm sorry?
And what's being requested is a special permit?
A special permit to alter and expand.
Yeah.
Yeah. And lot coverage.
Does he need a variance? Any setback or? No, just lot coverage.
The variance is for lot coverage.
Okay.
Alter and expand, special permit and lot coverage variance. I mean, everybody's covering that whole lot.
Why does he need lot coverage? He's going-
It's an increase in coverage.
Yeah, but he's allowed a 35, isn't he?
I'm sorry?
Isn't that an R5? He's allowed 35, I think.
Yeah, but what is-
Unless I misread.
Oh, 33, okay.
So I don't think he needs a variance.
So he doesn't need the variance for coverage, based on that measurement. Okay, so the only thing before us would be the special permit to alter and expand a non-conforming structure. Any discussion?
In the, I'll make a motion.
Peter?
In the application, Timothy K. Oviat, I move in favor of special permit 1.9. I want to recognize the lady who was in opposition. I just want to say, we understand your concern, but based on the information that we presented, it wasn't more detrimental to the neighborhood. And your butter, Dr. Butter was in favor. And for those reasons, I make the motion in favor.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded for a special permit to alter and expand. Roll call?
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Heard our decision's favorable. We'll put together a draft. I'll, I'll do it. All right. You want to go here? You want to sit down on the decatur? Okay, so Ron and, oh, you're back, Michael. So Ron, you'll vote on the decatur. And I am gonna probably sit out on Wheeler. Oh, Deacon Farm, you're in Deacon Farm. Okay. Okay, our next is the application of John Lockwood and Kirsten Olson Lockwood for a special permit of variance to convert a bond to a two-family at Two Deacon Farm Lane.
I'm gonna let John do the talking. He knows more about what's going on.
Good evening, John Lockwood. Got to talk. My name is John Lockwood, and we want to convert that barn over at Two Deacon Farm Lane. I believe the one-
Will you just state your address?
Oh, our home address?
Yeah.
We live, oh, we live at 19 Addington Road in Brookline, Mass. We're planning on renovating this building and moving up here. We're empty nesters, and we figured this is our opportunity to get out of the city. So we want to convert this barn into a two-family home. And I believe the one area at the back of the property is within setback. And I think that area, we don't want to increase the size of the footprint. We just want to raise the, the kind of the ceiling in that back area, just because right now, it's about six feet. And we want to, we want to kind of line up all the soffits on the house. And so that one particular area would be 11-foot ceiling, but the adjacent area would be eight-foot ceilings. So it's, I think if you look at the plans, it's kind of simplifying the roof lines. But, yeah, and so we asked the condo association in this development if we could do a two-family house. And they said they had a couple more slots that we could do that. So we want to make our primary property and then another unit, hopefully to offset some of the cost of doing the construction.
Questions?
I just want to clarify what they're asking for. So I think what they're asking for, special permit, 2.3.1, I think 5B, is that what they're asking for? And a rear yard variance of 1.2 feet. I think that's the relief they need. Changing the use so they lose- So I think they need a variance to keep the building there, basically. And the change of use is 1.8.3, right?
This is the structure we already made at a hearing on two years ago. It was-
That's a vague memory that I have too. I didn't go back and look.
That was McCarthy.
I think so.
So he's not there anymore?
No.
It was for his kid, right?
Yeah, right. So they've sold that and want to build them, because in the narrative, it talked about two buildings. That's why I was saying, we can't make a two-family on two buildings. This is going to be one building, right? Yeah, all right. So the narrative was a little off. That's what threw me off, because I'm saying, are they going to try to occupy the shed or, you know, or whatever?
No.
Only if you're a bad boy.
They had a chicken coop in there.
Just kidding.
Yeah. Okay. Now I'm with you. Any other questions? Didn't list the previous decision in the application. I thought there was one.
So we don't, we don't need to make this gentleman go through the, the factors, but that's what we're going to consider with the change of use.
Yeah, I just want to get clear. So we're, we're alter and expand, change of use, and they're, they're talking about a rear yard setback?
Yeah.
Variance? Is that it? All right, well, anyone has anything else at this time? We'll go to public testimony. For anyone wishing to speak in support of the application, please come forward. Any support?
Take a seat just.
None? Is there any one wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Being none, we'll close public testimony. Seems like we have before us another building in need of improvement. For sure. Any discussion by the board? Are we ready to move forward?
Just a quick comment, just going through the standards. 1.8.3 for the change of use, social economic, it's pretty straightforward, traffic flow and safety, it's just two bill, you know, it's just two-family utilities. I'm sure they'll be adequate when they're brought to the house. Neighborhood character, they're single and two-family homes in the area, so I think it fits. Fiscal impact, obviously, tax base will seriously increase with a two-family. And I don't know about flooding, I don't think it's in the flood zone, but, so anyway, I think those are, those are all adequately addressed, just in the building.
Make a motion, Mike?
I can make a motion. Application of John Lockwood and Kirsten Olson Lockwood for special permit, use permit 2.3.1, 5B, change of use from the barn to a two-family home. And I just went through the, the standard, I believe that they're all met. And then also would move approval of a variance 1.7 for a rear yard setback of 1.2 feet, because when you change the use, you lose existing permissions. So I'd move approval of the special permit and of the variance.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Norton. Roll call vote.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Heard that decision's favorable, we'll put together a draft. Lauren, you might have to, got to get more lawyers up here. Okay, this application, I will, Ron, you hear this, I'll, I won't be voting. I live on Wheeler Street, although far away. Okay, our next is the application of Stephen and Deborah Arena for special permit of variance to demolish and reconstruct a single-family home at 128 Wheeler Street. Attorney Ellison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, 63 Middle Street Gloucester. I represent the applicant Stephen and Deborah Arena. Mr. Arena, the Arenas are away and so Mr. Arena is on Zoom. The architect is Treehouse Design and Ellen Levine is also on Zoom. The property, as I said, is located at 128 Wheeler and I would like to share my screen. This is a picture of the property, the existing house. The applicants are seeking permits for under GZI 1.9, 2.4.3 and 2.4.5 for the demolition, reconstruction and alteration of a pre-existing non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot and no other relief is required.
Can I ask a quick question just about relief? So do you feel that the increase in lot coverage is so de minimis that you don't, because you are increasing? I know it's only 10 square feet, but you go from 38.1 to 38.3. So you, you don't-
Yes.
Go ahead.
But it is already non-conforming, I believe, so the increase would be still under the special permit and not a variance.
Probably no better than I do. I guess I don't know that.
Right. It's currently, existing is 38.1%. It's going to 38.3% and allowed is 30%. So I would say it's not a variance, but it's still under the special permit. So they, as I said, they're seeking to demolish the existing single-family home and to replace it with a single-family home on the same footprint, except for the small bump out that Mr. Nyman was referring to for a fireplace. And all of the other setbacks will remain the same. This proposal previously came before the board in 2021 and you approved it unanimously. Although the ZBA decision was not appealed, the order of conditions was, and that was finally resolved in November of 2024. And since that time, the decision has expired, your decision, and the Arenas have decided to make some slight changes to that plan that was originally approved. One of those is the bump out, which is shown here. And the other is that the existing deck, they will keep it on the left side and there'll be an expansion of a room on the right. And the previous proposal was the opposite. They expanded the room to the left and kept the deck on the right. And these are just the floor plans. This is the basement and this is the first floor showing the deck and the expansion of the room. And these are the elevations. The property is in the R10 zone and that requires 10,000 square feet. This property is 5,500 square feet. The existing house complies with the rear yard setback. It has 42 feet, which is, 20 feet is required. It also complies with the left yard setback where the bump out is, and that bump out is also compliant with the setback. And it complies with the left yard setback with regard to the existing deck and that deck that will be remaining. The owner of 128 Wheeler Street has sent in a letter of support on the right. This is the side where they are non-compliant with the left, right side setback. And the owner of 126 Wheeler Street is not opposing the project. It currently, the height currently complies at 27 feet 5 and 1/2 inches. It will be increased to approximately 30 feet, 29 feet 11 inches, which remains compliant. And it does not comply with many of the remaining dimensional requirements, but none of those will be changing. The lots in this neighborhood, as you probably know, are generally undersized and most are 5,000 square feet or less and most of the structures are non-conforming. He, my client, has received letters of support from nine of the neighborhood abutters. For this, I would suggest that the special permit to alter and expand a non-conforming use should be granted because the new home is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming home. There are no new non-conformities being created. The only change to the dimensions is the height, which remains under 30 feet. It will be much more comfortable and user-friendly for the owners than the existing structure was, which was constructed in the early 1900s. It's consistent with a neighborhood that is comprised of small, undersized lots and many of the houses in the neighborhood have been improved in the recent years and many have been improved beyond their existing footprints and made substantially larger. The applicants don't propose to do that. And with regard to demolishing and reconstructing the house under 2.4.5, I would suggest that those are the same standards for the special permit. And in addition, they will be complying with the requirements that both the demolition and plans will be approved before they demolish the existing structure. Construction of the new home will follow demolition as expeditiously as possible and those portions of the home that do not comply with the ordinance will be approved by the ZBA. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. No questions at this time. We'll open for public hearing. For anyone wishing to speak in support of the application, please come forward. Being none, is there any opposition to the project? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come forward or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing none? Any more discussion? Are we ready?
Are there letters in favor? Yeah, they're in the, they're in the-
In the drive, yeah.
On the drive.
Looks like a good project.
Yes, go ahead.
On the application of Stephen and Deborah Arena for our special permit and/or variance at 128 Wheeler Street, move for all the requested relief.
Second.
Do you have a motion made and seconded? Roll call vote.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes, for 1.9, 2.43 and 2.45.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes, for the relief requested.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Heard that decision's favorable. Appreciate a draft decision. Lighten the load. Okay, on the last hearing of the evening, James is stepping aside and, you'll be hearing this one. Application of David Rosenblatt and Judith Sockle, trustees of 19 Decatur Street, special permit of variance to demolish and reconstr- no, sorry, reading the wrong one. For special permit of variance to construct an addition at 19 Decatur Street, Attorney Frontero.
Yes, for the record, Attorney Sal Frontero, 46 Middle Street Gloucester, for the applicants. Judith Sockle and David Rosenblatt, both of whom are here today. This is a family home that's been inherited down through the, through this generation to this generation and it's used primarily as a vacation home. The site is located in the R20 zoning district. The site consists of an 18,249 square foot home. A little bit of history with this property. A large addition was built on the right front side, if you're looking from the street in the early 2000s. If you could share the screen, that'd be great. Oh, is this shared? Let's see it. Oh, I think I get, okay, yep. Got it. All right. All right, so this, I just want to show you a little bit, this is the site itself. This is the addition I was referring to, right here, that was built when this was an R10 zoning district, by the way. And then in 2014, the zoning, by then the zoning had changed. It was originally R10, it became R20 and they got a variance, excuse me, a decision from this board to rebuild this little garage right here. So that's sort of the history of the property. As a result of the change in the zoning, the addition here became non-conforming as a side yard setback and the original house became non-conforming as to both rear yard setback and side yard setback. So again, legal when built became non-conforming. So what they propose to do is in this little area right here, there's an existing deck and stairs. They want to enclose that to expand the kitchen and the addition, it's not really an addition, they basically would be not increasing the footprint, but what would happen is that would all be enclosed by an addition that consists of under four feet wide, three, three feet nine inches and 23 feet long. So I just wanted to show you. So this, sorry, let me see here. So you can see this is the existing porch from the, from the rear. And here is what shows where the addition would have closed that. And by the way, the addition will be built on still, so there'll be no foundation. And this shows it sort of from the side view. And this shows the existing kitchen. So we have a rather large house, but the kitchen sort of doesn't work. I actually visited the property. It's really, really tight here, the way it's set up. So all they are seeking to do is add this on and reconfigure the kitchen so that it'll be a little bit more accommodating, you know, less crowded for everybody using the prop, using the kitchen. This will, this area here will be turned into kitchen space rather than sort of a galley looking space as it was before. And this is a picture of the rear of the property showing the deck and stairs as they exist here. Another view from the rear, right here. And then another view from the rear showing how wooded it is. This is all surrounded by woods, the whole entire area. The nearest neighbor is pretty far remote from here. My clients did attempt to speak with all the abutters. I know we have won in opposition today, but they were able to speak to five of them and all had no problem with it or were in favor. Under 2.3.4 and the zoning ordinance, excuse me, 2.4.3 and 2.4.4, this board has authorized to issue special permits in this situation. Again, it's a non-conforming structure and a non-conforming lot. First determining whether the proposed work increases the non-conformity of the structure and one might consider any addition in footprint with the, with the living space to be increasing the non-conformity because we're already on a undersized lot. So also increasing into the setback would be living space rather than porch space. And as this board knows, porches and unenclosed porches and decks can go up to three feet into the setback. So I do submit that this does increase the non-conforming nature of the site. However, I also submit that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Again, I'm sure most of you did a site visit. You saw how remotely located the nearest house is. This is almost as a matter of law, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I would submit that nobody at all is affected by this. It's not going to affect anybody's privacy, anybody's overshadowing or anything like that. You barely will even, you won't even see it from the street barely and none, no neighbors will really be able to view it at all. So I think if there's ever a case where something is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, it's this. Again, very, very small and just to accommodate a more practical kitchen for the size of the house. No variance is necessary. You know, the, no variance was necessary when the original addition was built, but then when the zoning change happened, the, the structure became non-conforming as did the, as did the site. So we would ask based on that, the special permit issued. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? We'll be happy to take.
This time, we'll take public testimony. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Come forward or raise your hand. Anyone in favor? Seeing none, is there any opposition to the project? Please come forward.
Thank you. I have some visuals I'd like to share with the board. I don't know if it makes sense just pulling in as a panelist so it can be on the record, right? So for the record, while this has me rejoining. Am I rejoining? I said yes. Join as panelists. So sorry, guys. Sign back on. For the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions. I am here, oh, sorry, address of 123 Main Street. I'm here on behalf of Scott Memhard and Martha Oaks, the owners, the property directly budding to the southwest. Let's click this Zoom link one more time. Okay. Do you see me again? I have a hand up on the active one. Do you see me as a participant with a hand up? Yeah, so. We're almost there, guys. Hey, thank you so much, guys. So I'll show you super briefly. I'm going to be a, be a better, so I have a limited time here. Just share my screen. So my clients own the property to the south, which is right here. And as you can see, 19 Decatur Street is tucked right into the corner between the client's property and their neighbor's property. And you might be saying, well, you know, Joel, you know the standard. It's, you know, substantial detriment to the neighborhood. You know, how is what the proposed, you know, substantial detriment to the neighborhood? And the issue is that in the context of the history of this property and what happens on this property, this allowance of expansion only furthers an ongoing nuisance. So back in. So back in 1991, when no one was looking, they built an addition off of this deck. Get my screen shared, come with me. They built a, an addition off of the deck that's before you currently. And not only did they build it up to the property line, they actually built it over the property line, and the building inspector had to order them to tear it back off. So it was in 91. Okay, well, that was in 91. 10 years later, you'll see that they had to deal with their other neighbor to the southeast, where it says Rosenblatt has the consent of Moynihan encroached onto the Moynihan parcel, like constructing landscape and related improvements on the Moynihan parcel. There's a sketch here that shows where they just went, you know, 10 years later onto someone else's property, and you can actually see it in the map geo. If you pull it back up, you'll see the, the little fence line shows the, the encroachment. So then, that was in 2001, so then this past, I think it was the spring, maybe it was, maybe it's the summer, they invited my clients down to look at the, the plans for this. And when we walked, when the clients walked over to the neighbor's house, they noticed all this rock garden improvement, et cetera. And what these neighbors who were the petitioners before it had done is decided that they were going to build a rock garden and landscaping onto my client's property. You see the two stakes in that picture is the dividing line. That's the corner of the deck that we're talking about. And you can see where they've put a nice gravel drainage swale right onto my client's property, where they've improved with stone, with crushed stone, with plantings, all onto my client's property. And so the reason why enclosing this deck and allowing them to continue their expansion outward is going to be substantial detriment to the neighborhood is because it only furthers a pattern of this particular property having no regard for the property lines in which they are required to remain. And I cannot imagine that when this becomes a room, and again, you can see how tight the corner of that deck is to this property line, I cannot imagine this becomes a room that we're not going to continue to have people encroaching onto the Memhard property to maintain, to cut vegetation back. There's a lot of windows on that side of the, of the, of the new addition. I'm sure they're not going to want to look at, you know, 10-foot-tall shrubbery, two and a half feet off the window, so I won't be surprised if one day Scott and Martha look out the window, and there's a landscaper on behalf of the Rosenblatts, five or 10 feet into the, into the Memhard property, taking down brush. Again, if this was just about this deck, I could see the argument that Attorney Frontero is making, but this is part of a habitual disregard for the property rights of the neighbors, allowing them to intensify the use jammed into the corner of this lot, rather than saying, hey, you want to bigger kitchen? You have so much space out the front. Go nuts. It's only going to give them more free rein to, you know, continue to infringe upon their neighbors. So I would respectfully argue that this will be substantial detriment to the neighborhood, because this is just a step in the process of continuing to take over other people's land, and I would hope at minimum, when we come out for a site visit, we can show you how tight it is out there and where they're already on other people's property. But if not, I would, if you're going to vote tonight, I hope you would vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Rebuttal?
Not on.
There we go. First of all, this is being characterized as the Wild West, like they're running amok and doing whatever they want. That's in fact not true. First of all, it was their parents owned the house in 1991 and 2001 when these things occurred. We don't know whether they were intentional or not. As a matter of fact, that my clients recently staked out the lot line. Nobody knew where the lot line was. What this is, is it's strictly being used as leverage to remove an accidental encroachment. What happened was my clients were, hired a contractor to put a patio on, and in the process, they said, well, it would really look nice here if we put a rock garden there. And it was basically all woods. And I don't think the neighbor even knew exactly where the lot line was. My clients had attempted to settle this, staked out the lot line, and we offered some compromises. I don't want to get into it too much because it's, you know, it's, it's settlement negotiations. They are fully, if, if forced to, they will remove the encroachment. That's not an issue. And this is being painted as a larger issue than it is. It's a very small issue. It's a under four-foot by 23-foot addition. Also, it was being characterized as a nuisance. I'm not sure how this little addition affects their use and enjoyment of their property. It is certainly not a nuisance. Also, it was characterized that, that my clients decided to build this rock garden and encroach. When they did it, they had no idea. They didn't find out until 20, this year, when, when they were approached by Mr. Memhard, who I believe they had never met before that, that it, that it could in fact be encroaching. He didn't know. When they, then we had the lot line staked and found that it was encroaching. And also, when it, when the picture was shown of the lawn, characterizing that wood line as the lot line, that is not the lot line. Their lot line goes further into the woods. So that was mischaracterized as being closer to the lot line than it is. And again, this is just about a small addition to a kitchen. There is no larger scheme to run amok in the neighborhood. I think we need to limit the analysis of this to that issue. My clients, when they accidentally encroached, they didn't know they were doing it, and in fact, nobody exactly knew where the lot line was at that time. They spent the money to have it staked out and, and try to compromise this matter. Unfortunately, that wasn't successful. If push comes to shove and they're forced to remove the encroachment, they'll do that. We tried to work on an agreement, you know, that would work both sides, but we weren't able to do that. So, but I want to reiterate, it's irrelevant to what we're doing here tonight. Thank you.
Question?
Yeah, I'm surprised by Joel's argument, I guess. We're not an enforcement board, never have been an enforcement board. I mean, I hope they can work stuff out, but it hasn't, I, from my opinion, has nothing to do with what's before us. What's before us is a small, I guess we call it an addition, because we're enclosing the porch of four by, not, less than four by 23, so less than 100 square feet is going to be enclosed. I'm sorry, this is not difficult for me personally. This is clearly not detrimental to the neighborhood, any more than the porch that already exists. So I hope the neighbors can work out their issues, but has nothing to do with us, in my opinion. So I, so, I mean, I can make a motion whenever.
Anybody else want to?
Yeah, I'm not voting on this, but I agree with Michael's points. I, you, you. He's in on this.
Only Peter.
No, when I, you know, it is very tight in the back there, but it is a long way away from the other structure, and it's buffered by vegetation, so I think Joel's point is irrelevant.
All righty. Michael, you want to make a motion?
Sure. Application of David P. Rosenblatt and Judith R. Sockle for a special permit to alter and expand a non-conforming, an existing non-conforming structure on an existing non-conforming lot at 19 Decatur Street. So I would move approval of the special permit. I think it is a slight increase in the non-conformity, because it's enclosing an existing porch. But it's, in my estimation, clearly it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, so I'd move approval.
Seconded. Motion made by Mr. Nyman, seconded by Mr. Ruiz. Roll call vote.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ruiz?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Yes.
Decision is affirmative. Appreciate a draft decision, please.
Be happy to do that. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next meeting is on December 11th. We have two hearings continued from our previous meeting. We also have a full docket of new applications, and this is all to do with, we only meet once a month, so it kind of builds up. So next meeting will be a similar lineup. We'll try to, we're still out before nine, so we'll try to keep that going. Other than that, no other business with the, hopefully we'll have more information on the 40B. We'll review that report, and I'll try to push that along. I think we're going to be in January on the final vote on that one, so. With that in mind, anybody, nothing else? We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes, if I don't see you, happy holidays.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Jalati?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes, we're adjourned.